Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. We're going to start off with our committees. The first committee is the Streets and Drainage Committee. Mr. Bass?
Thank you. We will open up the Streets and Drainage Committee at 6:00 PM. We'll have, we have Resolution 25 R-37. So Resolution 25 R-37 authorizes us to apply for the Federal Service Transportation Program, STP, for the AMAX. So it's Academic Metropolitan Area Transportation System. That's what the S is for, for study. Oh, that's close. But this is not personally, it's not committed to any funds. It's just to apply for a grant. This is going to be for State Road, State Route 619, all the way to the end of New Franklin, City Limits line, or the Corporation line. And it's about 3,000 feet. I think it's actually 2,891 feet to be precise. What they'll be doing is they'll be building the top areas of the intermediate surface asphalt, performing a partial and full depth pavement repair, so all of it, basically. And then we'll pave the entire segment. The big thing through AMAX is that the PCI, the Pavement Condition Index on this is currently a 64 on this road. So it's below AMAX threshold 80, which qualifies this project for resurfacing, which is really nice. And I did see an interesting fact is that the average daily traffic on this part of State Road is 3,178 vehicles, which is a lot for that little structure. I didn't know that many people drove on the pavement, but I guess it'd be good to go in a little while.
It is a lot.
I know that if we can talk about the total scope of the project, but this is just for the grants of it, is that the estimated project will cost $639,000, just about. So the construction will be $625,000. $562,491 will come from the AMAX parts. So it's 90%. Our portion's only 10%, so $62,500 will match to that. So only 10%. And I know the engineering right of way, which will be local, which we have to pay for, is about $15,000 as well. The other thing about this is the timeline for the project. The legislation's with ODOT, so they've already passed that with ODOT, which is really nice. The design and engineering stuff, I think instead it was going to start between April and December, which is nice. And the target start of construction will be next year, July 25. I read. Does anybody have any further comments or questions?
This is for State Road, correct?
Yeah.
Not 619?
State Road 619 to the New Franklin Corporation limit.
It would be two separate streets here.
State Road from 619?
Oh, from 619. I apologize. I just woke up. Why do you think?
No, it's all right. I probably misunderstood. Thank you.
No, I'm sure you're right. I apologize.
Any further questions or comments?
No. I'm going to count to three, just how it's stated in there, State Road could be confusing somewhere.
Yeah. All right. Comfortable waving the three?
Yeah.
Also, we will close the Streets and Drainage Committee at 6:03 PM.
Our next committee is going to be Finance Committee. Mr. Bass?
I'll go ahead and take this one. We'll open up the Finance Committee at 6:04. Today we've got a Resolution 25 R-38, which is a resolution adopting a modified job description and granting an increase for New Franklin Director of Finance and declaring an emergency. This is a salary increase that's a little bit out of our normal end-of-year cycle on that. It is kind of lining up with what we had from earlier in the year with some changeover in departments. So the mayor is realigning some of the duties inside there. And also, we're trying to do a market rate adjustment. This isn't a merit or performance increase that we don't know within the year. It's simply a market rate adjustment to comply with the new job description.
Thomas?
Sir, I thought we were adding some duties to this as well. Is that correct?
Yes.
And in our, maybe I just misunderstood, but I thought we were making it more of a supervisory role?
Yes. Let's see.
So when you look at the duties, it says oversee, but very little on there says about Serves as direct support for human resources, oversees operations with their...
Terminology. That's just termed off. I mean, those are going to be the responsibilities. Let's see. So oversee operations, coordinate work assignments among administrative staffs, assist in preparation or review of job descriptions for the staff, approve staff's schedule changes, vacations, time off, subject to final approval by the mayor, assist in review of personnel policy and procedure manual. So those are the supervisory responsibilities in terms of job assignments, approving time off, job descriptions, et cetera. And we added, let's see. Well, and I would note that there's also a component for training and support of the HR staff, which is something that already took place this calendar year. And in addition, the, some arguably, under the definition of her being fiscal officer, in this case it's a woman, there are responsibilities that will flow to that person. We did elaborate a little bit more on the general duties section of it. Serve as point of contact for grants and economic development projects, oversee finance and administration staff. The point of contact for grants and economic development and also program administrator for development finance, these are, this is new to New Franklin, both of these. And both are complex. And I will tell you that the federal grant process is extremely complex. And so those additional, while they're within the ambit of fiscal officer, they're new to this position, that they're new to New Franklin. So it's, as I've indicated, everybody back there is working full speed and now there's more. So I felt with the broadening of the job responsibilities, I think that's going to be helpful to us, ending with these additional responsibilities, an increase up to basically low end of market rate is in the best interest of the city.
Mr. Thomas? Do you comfortable waving the three?
Move on to 25 R-41. Resolution authorizing additional corporations to the 2025 annual operating incorporation budget and declaring an emergency. This is a $4,115 transfer to cover both police desks for the police department. Seems like that probably pretty neat.
Thomas? Everybody comfortable waving the three? Very good. And lastly, we've got 25... Yep, you're right. 42.
25 R-42, a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the police district fund and declaring an emergency. We do this every few months. The police fund is funded out of the general fund and we just move their budget amounts from the general funds to police from regular basis.
Questions, Thomas? It's just about a quarter of it. Just about a quarter of it. Comfortable waving the three?
Yep.
Easy one.
25 R-43, a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the Parks and Recreation Fund to the Parks and Recreation Capital Projects Fund and declaring an emergency. Years ago, we built the tennis courts and we did borrow some money out of the general fund and we replaced that at a rate of $75,000 a year from the Parks budget into the general fund. Mr. Mayor, did notice on that, it says from Parks and Recreation to Parks and Recreation Capital Projects. Does that make a bounce between that and general fund or something?
Yeah, it's a separate fund. So she created a separate line for that capital projects for the funds to go into.
Okay. Does that transfer back into the general fund then?
Yes. I don't, I'll have to ask, I don't know if, I think we're accumulating it and then getting a transfer at all at the end where as needed. So it's that pleasure of building council. That's the path that it follows.
And that's a one-time-a-year $75,000 transfer, right?
That is, yes. The initial, well, back in 2022, we had accumulated 150,000 in the parks towards that. So there was the initial 150,000 committed to the project. We had, we got a $52,791 grant from OBNR that went to the project. And then we started the installments in '23. This is a third of those. We have '26, '27, '28, '29, the full 75,000, and then a 30 would be 41,000. So we're getting there.
Questions or comments? Comfortable waving the three? Very good. I'll close the Parks and Rec, or sorry, the Finance Committee at 6:10.
Our next committee is Community Development. Mr. Shaple?
We will open Community Development at 6:10. We have Resolution 25-R-39 for us. It's a resolution authorizing Franklin to enter into an agreement with OHM Advisors for the Design Assistant Park Trail Private and declaring an emergency. This one here specifically talks about the sister trail over there, which is cut down from the three-quarter to the half mile. It's going to start out as gravel and as it gets packed down, maybe we'll do asphalt in the future. The question I have on this, Mr. Mayor, is, we had asked a question before when they were talking about using a three-quarter mile track and whether if the school board was on board of this and the president had said he had no knowledge of it. It was his statement. We asked something from the school board, not the superintendent, but from the school board saying that they're okay with part of this track being the school property. I hate to spend $38,500 to get this all prepped and it had the school board saying, no, I don't want it on the property.
Yeah, I think the plan, the path we took, it goes behind the tennis courts, doesn't it? So that's where we approach it, is that stretch there. I cannot speak for the superintendent. I presume that he had the authority of the school board when he agreed to the project. But, you know, we can, we can check that. Yeah, we can check that and then just take time on this and we'll come back. All right. Well, I'm going to ask for time on this issue unless anybody else had anything to weigh in on?
I'm just looking at this plot map on here where it says gravel in your end of there and it looks like it shows two different, two separate paths. Is that, are they not connected or am I looking at the wrong thing?
It's the gray line.
It's the gray line. Okay, gotcha. I was looking at the blue line in between the two segments there.
So we will close Community Development at 6:15.
All right. Your next committee is Safety Committee. Ms. Jones?
Resolution number 25 R-40. A resolution amending Resolution 25 R-34 to proceed with an additional levy of a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation to replace an expiring 5.75 mil fire slash EMS levies to enable the city of New Franklin to provide fire protection services and ambulance and emergency medical services and to submit the question of the tax to the electors at the November 4, 2025 election and declare an emergency. And this is something just actually stating what we needed from this. Am I correct?
Right. Cassidy, earlier resolution, we mentioned that in the first warehouse pause on May 7. A couple of things, but one that was probably most operative is that I reviewed it with the Board of Elections. They had some concerns about how it was represented from the, for what tax year the correction would start. And in fact, I had, I had the, I had some wrong years in there. So a couple I had '25, '26, a couple I had '26, '27. So I was really thinking about that. But then it turns out, so we put this together and I got a call, I can't remember, maybe Friday, that the board had learned that the Secretary of State had made a further amendment to ballot language. And it had to do with how you express the amount of the, whether you could round off. In other words, this levy is going to produce 3,304,000. On the old line, you could round it off and just say 3 million, 3.3, and now you had to have a whole number. So we had to make sure that was compliant as well. I did run this past the Board of Elections and they were satisfied with the language. So my intention would be if it passes tonight, I'm going to take it down tomorrow, test the hand delivery and make sure we get it on the ballot.
Will we all have an agreement to waive? I will close the Safety Committee at 6:17.
Our last here, Leans, in the laws and ordinance. Mr. Wolf?
Let's open up the laws and ordinance committee at 6:15 PM. An ordinance, 25003, an ordinance submitting to the electors of the city of New Franklin, a proposal for amendment sections 7.05, 7.06, and 7.07 of the charter and declaring that this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon passage. Mr. Powell, since you are the sponsor of this?
Yeah, so last year I brought this forward. It was a charter review year and there's a lot going on there. And Mr. Bass, you expressed there's a lot on there. So instead of adding more to it, we rescinded last year. We talked about bringing it in this year. In some other discussions with some of the council members, they felt that there was too much of a swing from one direction to the other. So what this does, this kind of balances everything out. One of the things that was pulled out of here was 7.04, which is the Parks Board. If you leave that alone right now, that is three numbers are appointed by the mayor, two appointed by council. If you look at those numbers and you take the Park Board, the long piece, three boards right here, it ends up being even split between the two bodies, if you will. It changes, let's see if I can get back to this here. So in 7.05, that's planning and zoning. It changes it from all five members being a council, or all five members being a mayor to two being a mayor, three being council. The Board of Zoning Appeals, currently all five are the mayor. This changes it to three to the mayor, two to the council. And then the Charter Committee, Charter Commission, previously, all of them were appointed by the mayor. And this brings it to three members of the mayor and four to council. So you guys are in favor of this? This is the same language that was passed by the, Mr. Sherman, okay, last year. One of the issues the mayor had drawn up last year was what do you do with existing people that are on the board? And I added a paragraph in there that says, "Any individual serving as a member of the boards covered by, you know, except for section 7.05, 7.06, 7.07, at the time of these amendments, say effect, shall continue to serve in the respective positions, with the remainder of their current term, subject to provisions." And when it's made. So essentially, whoever is currently on the board has run out their existing board appointment. When it comes time for that reappointment, you can look at the charter. And so, for instance, like on the, on the Board of Zoning Appeals, right now all five are appointed by the mayor. So until you get to the complement that would match what the amended language would say, which would be three and two, so the next two people, you know, basically expiring on the Board of Zoning Appeals would be appointed by council, and then that would give you the three and two.
Then this will eventually be a ballot. The voters will...
This will go to the voters.
I got two comments, three. First of all, I've deferred whatever council chooses to do on this. I don't know that it's going to dramatically change. Council, as you are well aware, has set veto power on all five positions, no matter who appoints them. And in, under this scenario, again, if the mayor appointment, that's subject to council's approval. So council's always had the opportunity to accept or refuse anyone that may or, so I don't know that it's going to dynamically change things and I'm fine either way, I think. As it relates to, and I just saw this Monday, which is good. I have some slight concern about, I see the language in section two that spells out what happens for people currently on board. That's not in the proposed ballot language. And I'm not sure it has to be. But that's what happens is, and I've really learned intimately now, is that the Board of Elections will take a look at this and then they'll send it down to the Secretary of State and then they'll decide. Okay? I would think the worst-case scenario is, let's assume that because that's not in there, you got to appoint a brand-new board. Well, that's not necessarily different than what you're doing anyway. You know, you can plug in the people to the terms that they already have, assuming they're willing to continue to serve. So I think that's manageable either way. The only other concern I got, and it may not be well-founded, but we've got extremely important fire levy on ballot. And so an argument could be made, let's not clutter up the ballot with, you know, with anything that might be distracting or suggest that, you know. Now, I don't think this does by itself. I don't think the nature of it is something that's going to cause people to say, oh, what's going on and gee, I don't think I should vote for the fire levy. But I don't know it doesn't do it. You know what I mean? In some sense, it'd be cleaner if all we have is the fire levy. So that's just an observation and I'm not trying to talk you off. If you feel now's the time, you know that I'm, you know, I'm going to stand away for a second.
How's it going? Anybody else have any?
I have a couple of things. Mr. Powell mentioned that I had concern last year with the amount of items being on the, on ballot and reason for us to wait a year on it, which is true, but I was not in favor of this. I was not in favor of it being put on the ballot and I'm still not in favor of it. I don't see any purpose for it. It's, as the mayor mentioned, we already have all the power. Council has the power to accept or refuse any nominations that come before us. So I don't see where this is necessary. I feel that if council is appointing the majority of people, for instance, with the planning and zoning commission, if we're suggesting and appointing three out of two, three out of the five, the majority of that, and then we're approving that, and then things come before council, it can give the appearance that, well, planning and zoning is an extension of council. And I don't think we need that appearance to be out there. You talked about how you would decide which, which positions on a council or on a board gets appointed to by the mayor or by, by council. And in the Parks and Recreation, as you mentioned, and we're not touching that because we already have the three to two split on that. But it's spelled out in the charter exactly, or it's spelled out on the, on the listing exactly who is appointed by who. And, and I think we should be able to do that. And ultimately, we may be able to move it on. I noticed that we did not do 7.03 Personnel Advisory and Appeals Board. There's three members plus an alternate and all but one expired this year. It is not listed. Is that because council already appoints all three? So there's no reason to split it up to give the mayor, mayor's office, any chance of appointment. It feels like it's a power grab, an unnecessary power grab by, by council. We had openings this past year, beginning of the year. We advertised it. We have, we asked for applications. We received a very limited number of applications for, for those board seats. What did, who of those limited numbers was a direct influence of council saying, come and apply? We'd love to see you to apply, to give that opportunity for it? And what, what makes us think that we're going to suddenly be able to, to fill positions when we really didn't show that the last time we had the opportunity to fill seats? In fact, people applied and then council even interviewed those people before the mayor made appointments. So council was already deeply involved in the selection of members of the board. And again, we, we hold all the power currently because we can veto. I don't think this is necessary. I think this is something that can get abused in the future. I don't think it's something that could be abused by, I don't think this council would be ones to abuse this, but I can see where it can be abused. We have alternates on each of these boards. Nothing's mentioned about who appoints the alternates for one-year terms. So who takes care of that? I don't, I don't see the reason. I'd also ask that we take time on this. We had, last year, we had people coming to a meeting to voice their concerns. There was even a letter to the editor in the West Side Leader about this proposal. They were against it and I think we should take time to give that opportunity for people to come in. I am against this 100%.
So last year I was, I didn't like how it was done because council was making the moves. I am always in favor of giving it to the people. All we're doing is giving them a chance to, so this is very different to me. I trust the people who would make the judgment and I'll stand, obviously I don't have a choice, but to me, it's the best way to find out. As opposed to cluttering it, I mean, I think our voters are pretty engaged and there's not a lot on there this year. Am I right that last year it was just going to be council was wanting to, and it didn't have to go to the voters?
Yeah, no, I should have looked at the chart as well, but there was a lot of other things on that as well.
Yeah, right. Much because of the charter commission. Okay. So, yeah, just my opinion, I'm, I'm good with it to at least let the voters decide. Anyone else?
I think that's another point that you brought up. The Charter Review Commission had this in front of them also and they chose not to move it forward. They didn't see a problem as a need for it. So that's why the Charter Review Commission didn't have it in their packet of charter changes to put on the ballot and this was brought separately.
And I do see also a distinction between vetoing and making recommendations. So you said we have full power. We can just say no, 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 which eventually we're going to say yes, right? So, yeah. I don't have a problem with it, but I want to hear, I mean, I'd love to hear other folks speak to that.
One of the things I would like to address, this wasn't done as a power grab and you mentioned the 7.03. That wasn't addressed and what was the taxation review folks or any of the other committees that we have? It's not actually in the charter, but we do the 619 core where we had the conference and plan. All those are currently and have been funded by the mayor. That's not addressing there as well. So some of that stuff is just left alone on purpose because, one, they don't get a lot of use and two, I don't have an issue with this out of power grab to pull everything from the mayor's, trying to break up and maybe affect someone even. As far as the alternates, I'm not sure that it even mentions the alternates in any current charter. So the language that's in there is directly out of the charter. Anyone else?
I have requested time on this. Will there be a granting time?
I will. I don't know that we can because it's got to be, it's got to be in the middle to miss the...
So we have, we do have a deadline, I'm told, so...
I understand you're concerned about a deadline and I'm concerned about that also. However, it's been the tradition of council that anytime anybody asks for time, that time is granted.
I think, is that the role of the president or the committee that...
Is it the president?
Yeah. So I'm going to defer to the president on that.
Well, I think it's the committee that asks for time. It's not the council president as the committee chairman will ask for time.
But he ultimately can say yea or nay.
I don't know the legal bounds of it.
The only thing that I can say is that because this is a very, I mean, I want to say you get your way, but you get your way if you ask for more time. There would not be a chance for the voters to decide.
I, I understand. Okay. However, this was brought to us the last meeting before it has to be turned in. There's been a whole year to present this resolution ordinance and it's waited until the last meeting. Is that intentional or lack of ability to read the calendar? I don't know. But it was presented at the very last meeting, so there, you know, ideally, so there would not be an opportunity. not be an opportunity for citizens to voice on this. And I think that's, that's wrong. We constantly battle the impression that we do whatever we want to do. We ram things through. We don't give enough time. You know, the emergency clause that we put on all of our resolutions and people constantly wondering about that, and why do we have to have that on there? I think it gives such a bad example for us to rush something through. This is exactly what the citizens talk about all the time, you know, rush something through like this. And I think it's absolutely wrong that we would even consider doing that and using the, the excuse of we're under a time constraint. We've had a whole year for this to come before us, and it's only brought before us the very last meeting before it has to be turned in. And I think that is absolutely wrong, and.
Got it. I would just say, once again, you're, the harm is, the bad side, the opposite side of you is giving the voters a voice to say yes or no.
The voters gave us a voice by electing us to make these good decisions. If, you know, if this isn't that big of a, you know, change or what, then another year is not gonna matter to put it before us, put it before the voters. But to, again, to rush it through, this is, is not good options.
I think also, the calendar didn't, I mean, I think it's trying to mischaracterize that. We did have this summer break, right?
Right.
And.
And it was mentioned at the last meeting that this was going to be brought before us.
Right.
Why couldn't it have been brought before us at the last meeting? Even the Charter Review Commission, the ones that they presented, which we have to pass, we as council, we don't have the choice of making any changes. If, if the Charter Review Commission says, this is what we want on the ballot, as council, we have to do that. We even gave that two readings. And now, we're going to say, well, it's not convenient for us to give it two readings. It's not convenient for council. I think that is, that's a horrible way to go. And again, tradition has always been, if somebody asks for time, we grant time. And because somebody didn't present it early enough, for whatever reason, for us to cancel, to cancel that tradition is wrong.
Well, I'd like to say something as a sponsor. First, I really don't appreciate the, the innuendo that this is gonna be underhanded or as a way to force it to be, because it wasn't. All right? So, I don't appreciate that. Second, as the person who sponsored this, I said I'd grant that, and that's what I did. You guys can do what you want with it. You guys can decide not to vote for it. You guys can decide to vote. I just did what I said I would do and brought it back. Sorry to get that in a time and a manner. It suits your needs, but that's just the way it happened.
It suits the citizens' needs, not my needs. I'm just the one bringing it up.
It's fine. But my point is to suggest the way you have this is done, and again, I take that seriously.
The citizens have it till November, whether they're gonna vote on it. No regrets.
That's my thing, is that it was something that was at council, was the final say. Councils, if, if this would be approved, is just giving the citizens a chance to chime in on it. I'm not, I don't care either way, to be honest with you. I, I lean towards, I'm not sure if it's gonna have any effect on it, but I'm always, it seems like we sense that the last year with all those charter changes, that that was a smart move to do that. But, I mean, I'm just thinking if we had, I don't want to say your way, but your position, you're not giving the citizens. You're acting like you're, you're the voice of the citizens in doing these things, but you're actually not giving the citizens a chance to vote on it. So, I'm just a committee man. I don't know. I need to have some feedback. I know ultimately, the president, you know, it's either approved or denied. I can ask the president?
If you would, maybe just pull everybody up.
That's what I.
See if they're ready. I'll find you.
Okay. Can I ask, so, because I'm, I'm put in this position as head of the committee on laws and ordinances, I need to, this is make or break kind of thing. Jim, I understand, Barry, can I ask where, if you'd like to vote on this or grant Mr. Coughell time, which essentially?
I'm torn, because I've asked for time on issues and I didn't grant the time.
Me too.
I like that, that standard that we have. I also, you always tell you, you're right to put something in front of the public and let them vote on it and get their opinion. I probably have a logistic question at this point in time. If this were to go and we asked for time, and they didn't remember, you bring it back or we continue the discussion and we decide to put it on, maybe go on the ballot next year?
Give it November twenty-sixth ballot.
It could go on a primary, couldn't it?
Okay. It has to be on the general election.
That's what I was gonna say. I'm opposed to putting anything in the name.
Okay.
The voter turnout is so poor in this part of the region, I don't, I don't know that we have a consensus of what the city really wants. So, in my mind, if we didn't vote, or didn't put it on the ballot this November, it's not going on the ballot until the next November. I'm not saying that that's good or bad. I just want to make sure everybody's kind of thinking the same thing.
We have, the Board of Zoning and Appeals, one term expires this year. Planning and zoning, we have one term that expires this year. And it was number three. Oh, it was the Charter Review, so there wouldn't be anything. So, we're, we're looking at two seats.
That could have affected.
So, we could, you know.
Was it at the end of this year?
Yes.
Which would, we're gonna have a new mayor also, right?
Right.
Um, okay. I, I, so I don't know where you stand there, Barry, now that you, I need, I need a poll to.
Yeah, I don't care. I was just.
Okay. Yeah, you're walking it through, and it helps. Think at last, we all can hear, maybe trigger some of us.
I'd really like to see this in front of voters, but I also, I guess it might go with the, because I want to be, to be afforded time as a councilman in the future. And I know it's a question, and I also can say, I'm not gonna waste your time when we ask for time for this little bit, and so, I would say, let's, let's ask for time for to go over this, but let's not put this issue on the floor. Let's get it done this year. If we decide to get it out there and make any changes to it, we are ready to go before the end of the year, the next November.
Got it. Judy?
I agree. As a person that, on passports, I have said on councils before that I said I don't want to ruin this now, and they just don't want me to do this. So, I dated many times this fall for the test, because I sat with them on council. And.
And this council?
This council is one of the best I have ever been on. I'll be quite honest. The people are so fortunate, and Jack, we missed you, but this is one of the best councils I've ever been on, and I've waited a long time for it.
And if this, I mean, I just.
I love all the.
It's a kind of a here that I would, Kevin, I'm gonna assume that.
I'm fine either way.
Okay. I want to look here for any.
We just need to check. I think there's some dates in there we need to.
Okay. Eric?
Yeah, I, given that there's only two up for there, and given the fact that during our last one, we really did have, council had a great change in review and take part and made recommendations, and that we get, we get veto power over it, I think it convinces it.
So, would we just ask for time?
I would do the time, okay.
So, I'm gonna ask for time on this.
Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna close the laws and ordinances.
Can I, can I interject one more thing on that?
Sure.
This is a question. First of all, I don't think this is anything else except for this council's been more hands-on than I've seen in a long time, and I help the fact that they want to be more involved in that. And I don't see, is my time on here any burdens for any of these council members that go there. I do worry about the council approving, approving, and approving, and having, you know, veto power and approval all the way through. But the other question I have is, I know, like, on the state level, governor makes nominations and general senate approves. And if we go to the federal level, president makes nominations and the senate approves. In Ohio municipality, is anybody aware of, do we have any precedent of that being different on a local level than what we're seeing? I'm not aware of.
Would you like to have a bigger view on, can you write?
No, I'm just curious about that.
You're asking something on that. I can give you the ever state representative, if you ask.
I could do some research, and I could find out for you. It may take a little bit of time, but we have something called LFC, the Legislative Services, Legislative Service Commission, that does specific research just like that, like you and they just have. I'll, I'll request that.
Right. I mean, I'm not saying that's a, a make or break for me whatsoever. I, it's a, it's a precedent across the board. Are we, are we blazing new ground here, or is this?
A lot, a lot of cities are different. Because I can tell you, when I'm out at the council, council, you're like.
I'm not aware of any statutory requirements. And even if there is, but it'd be nice to, you know, get a definite answer. There's a strong likelihood that that would be overridden by the, by the charter, because we're a charter city. So, and others, if right, the statutes that don't apply to us because we're a charter city, probably this would be one, even if it exists, that the charter didn't, that the community would have a right in, because there's some power points out. I agree with the citizens, but different, so. But it's a good answer, a good question. You might as well know all the, get all those answers.
I'm not, yeah, I, there's not a state law that requires because you are a charter city, you get to pretty long what you want. What I can do is I can find statistics on how many, I think I can. I'm still a little, I think I can get that.
Thank you so much.
Well, the good news is we got two seats that kind of, this is gonna be a good test scenario for everybody to do. Stuff, mind, get out there, find out, you know, which seats we're, we're refilling, get that interview process going, and see how many more people we can bring to the table for consideration, whether it be the mayor's committee or somebody the council suggests. So, gotta get a support.
The boards are really, they're places to start. What do you guys think? Really, boards are great.
Any other comments before closing? All right, so, close the laws and ordinance committee, you have six forty-two.
Thank you. And if I had to like to call the board, the city of Franklin, how come in for Wednesday last sixteen, which is one in a bunch?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Coughell.
Present.
Mr. Schaefer.
Present.
Mrs. Jones.
Present.
Mr. Coughell.
Present.
Mr. Stiles.
Present.
Mr. Wolf.
Present.
Mr. Amen.
Yes.
Mr. Coughell.
Yes.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the financials for June two thousand twenty-five?
I make a motion.
The first?
Seven.
The seventh? Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Coughell.
Yes.
Mr. Stiles.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Amen.
Yes.
Mr. Coughell.
Yes.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the financials for June two thousand twenty-five?
I make a motion.
The first?
There is. There are not yet.
No?
No.
Okay. Next section is public comments. If you have a comment you'd like to address the council, please state your name, address, and you have four minutes to speak.
Sure. All right. Hi, I'm Jack Daniels. For anybody that doesn't know me, I'm your state representative. I haven't been able to come to council meetings because we have to be in Columbus on Wednesday. So, I got Monarch and New Franklin, so I just left Monarch and got to see their, their village council meeting, and now I'm here. I really wanted to just basically make sure that you, that I'm still paying attention to New Franklin. You're one of larger municipalities in my, in my district. To answer any questions you might have, letting you know a little bit of the things that have been happening in Columbus. We did pass the operating budget, which was much more work than I anticipated. I had no idea how deep that was gonna get. The governor vetoed unfortunately sixty-seven of our items, all of our property tax work. So, we put, there was a bicameral commission done in the last two years, the study property tax came up with list of recommendations. We utilized those recommendations. These three of the four property tax pieces that we did were part of that. And now, the governor says he wants to stop. We did too much, and we need to have another commission, another study. So, in my opinion, the study is an opportunity to delay. The three that I believe are going to be overridden on Monday will not change any tax in the year twenty twenty-six. They don't take any money away from any municipality or any school. They don't change a thing. All they do is regulate the growth. So, that's the, that's the number one thing. If you have one concern, and I saw you put language on for a fire replacement. So, if we override veto number sixty-six, sixty-seven, that one specifically, I'll pause replacement letters. We'll have to change the language, and I don't know how this is gonna work timing-wise, because we didn't, it just came this way, so we hope, we were hoping you would have clarity by this time. It's, it's gonna be confusing. So, I don't have the answer on how this is gonna work, but the, the attitude at the state level was that you can have a replace, a renewal with increase, but not a replacement, because the replacement concept gets confusing. We had a number of municipalities and school districts that did something a little tricky. They would reduce the rate that was originally passed at three mil. They would make it two point eight mil, and then they would say it was a reduction on their sign, when it's actually replacing something that is effective millage may have been two and a half mil or two mil. So, it was actually increasing people's taxes, but they were marketing it as a reduction. That happened in one or two communities in some county. So, that was the mindset that came behind that. How that's gonna work out in Wash, I can't.
When will you, when will you override that?
Monday.
And when does it do? When can we, Mr. Mayor, when can we? Well, first of all, we're okay. But the, and I wonder what the, initially, there was, when it was proposed, I think, as a standalone bill, the effective date was gonna be anything after October first.
That's that. I don't know.
Yeah. I thought this one, the way it was passed, was January first, so it wouldn't affect the November ballot.
I'm gonna ask the sponsor of the members of the.
But the thing is, we didn't do, we anticipated that would happen.
Right.
And so, what we have is an additional button.
Oh, good.
So, yeah. And we thought, yeah, I'm there. Yeah, no, I'm in Columbus, as a matter of fact. I was sitting in your committee, and I got a, a back enable or so, and I got a pretty good flavor of what direction that was gonna go. So, but I appreciate your heads up on it.
And I never miss raising names committee. End of the day, that our mayor is, is in our committee, my aide grouped up, and I was across the street at a, at a.
That's all good.
Yeah, so that's what's happening. Anybody have any questions? Nope. Okay. Hopefully, y'all have my cell phone. If you don't, I ran out of cards in Monarch, they, they sucked them all up, so. But please feel free to reach out. I'll also say, I, I really enjoy giving tours at the State House and showing people what happens down there and how it works. When you, I'm, I'm leaving that, so it'll probably get boring eventually, but I really enjoy it. And when you're, when I'm with you, I can take you down on the, on the house floor, take you up to the Lingon Chair and all that kind of stuff. It's a fascinating building. It's a beautiful building. I think it's one of the most beautiful capitals in the country, and it has a very rich industry.
What days are you down?
I'm typically down there Tuesdays and Wednesdays. The heat of the, well, the air conditioning's broken in the Capitol right now, so they're, they're replacing it. So, we're actually gonna be, on Monday, we're gonna be over in the Senate chambers with the mayor. So, I wouldn't do it in the summertime. Spring and fall, when the weather is moderate, is the best time, because then I can take you up into the tuvalu, which is above the rokanda, the tuna can over the egg shell thing, and you can sign your name up there. But that can only be done when the weather's moderate, not too cold, not too hot.
Second question. The Inside Village, which I think was a standalone, then it became part of the budget. And then, you guys didn't pass, did not pass.
It did not go into the budget.
Yeah.
That was not even, it was never included in the budget.
Okay. Are you in a position to predict whether, whether that's going to come back up or? The council passed a resolution adverse to it, obviously, you, you well know. the council passed a resolution adverse to it, obviously, you, you well know, for us is one point two million dollars. That's a big hit for us.
And a lot. So, that was Household two thirty-five, and it still exists. So, we passed the budget, we put lots of stuff on the budget, because we can, we can pass as a package, it's a political process. But that Household two thirty-five still exists out there. So, it could still end up, and don't remember if it passed through committee?
I don't know either.
I don't think it, I don't think it did. In fact, I know it didn't. But it could still. And I will tell you, if we're not able to override at least three, at least four, I think that's, it's gonna be crazy. I think, I mean, residents are clamoring for property tax up. Clamoring. They want help now. The ten mil change and the forty percent cap on carryover cap, if you're familiar with that, and that's more of a state, there is a state issue. Those are two items that would have affected, affected homeowners immediately, January. Homeowners and business owners in January. So, those two came out, we thought we were actually moderating the legislation. The governor did not complain about anything. They were in a room for every discussion and every conversation. They never said a single word. They didn't have any problem with anything, other than that that ten mil inside village was, was pretty contentious. So, we were shocked when the governor vetoed all of our property tax work. If we can't override those, I think you're gonna see some very aggressive legislation, possibly even more aggressive than that, so.
And I know it's a tough call for everybody down there in Columbus, because on one hand, you wanna give relief to property owners, but on the other hand, especially those of you who've been in the front line, you know, what, what happened, you know, what does New Franklin do if, it's not just a million dollars, what year?
Green, green schools was three and a half.
Right. New Franklin was, or Manchester was two point four. All four of our school districts would have lost in excess of two million dollars.
Right.
So, it's a tough balance. I don't know where the answers are, and I don't know if it's a, you know, a snap of the fingers, but I get it, you guys got a tough challenge.
So, hopefully.
How do you feel about this committee he's putting together? Is there support for that?
No. Is the notion that's gonna be bipartisan?
Not, not that I've heard. No, we haven't been in Columbus, so we'll have, we'll have pockets, so the Republican pockets needs first, before we have a vote for the floor. That's where we get a grip on what, what's the flavor of the room, and what's gonna happen. We really don't have too many conversations outside of that. We're assigned a what's called whip, that's designed to whip our votes. So, they'll have individual conversations with us, but because of sunshine laws, we can't have big group conversations unless it's an official meeting, it's all, it's not open to the public, but it's notified to the public when we have pockets. So, I'm not really sure. I, I just know that there'll be margin on Columbus if they'll do something. This will be about the fourth year of zero activity, following a two-year study commission, a very unproductive legislature last term, and now if we get nothing done, it's gonna be a problem.
You're saying that the governor is going to appoint this committee? Are you sure it's not?
He, he has. I know he mentioned Bill Sykes is the, I think Bill Sykes was gonna run it, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that name. Bill became a legislator when he was about fifty years old, and served twenty-four years in the, between the House and the Senate. He's one of the ones, not very many people can do it, because of the number of work, but he went back and forth between the House and the Senate. Very, very bright man, very respected. But I, even with Bill Sykes being that popular of a person being appointed, our attitude, what I've heard is, what are we studying? Something that we've been studying over and over and over. Why are we continuing to just kick the can down the road? That's all it feels like to us. And then, for him to not, for the governor's office, who had not said a single word through this process, and then throw out everything he did, was.
Disparting.
Very disparting. A lot of people are very upset. So, I fear if we're not able to override because of vacations, that's the other thing, he waited till eleven forty-five PM on the thirtieth to do his veto, which eliminated our ability to get back in session quickly. So, now we've got members on cruises and stuff like that, they, they can't get back.
And again, it's, I get it, the people, I feel strongly in that, that we need to do some education for people relative to what property tax is all about, what kind of, what kind of services are funded through the property tax, what happens if that property tax disappears? As you know, there's an attempt to, to do away with property taxes altogether. And so, it's just a double-edged sword, that people don't wanna pay that. I get it, people are hurt. But when we looked at some of the numbers, and I'm sure you, you got hit with some of those, for instance, you know, what is, you know, what are the New Frank schools, Manchester schools do if they lose two and a half million dollars? You know, how do they make that up? Summit County, as you know, was.
Forty-one.
Forty-one million dollars. And so, they're, they're in services administrations all across the state, they're funding. You, you've heard it till you're sick of hearing it. But from my concern, you know, among the things that, we hear the sheriff say they're gonna cut down a lot of patrols, we gotta cut prosecutor's office, maybe shut a wing of the jail. That is stuff that impacts everybody. And that was.
That was just with the ten mil inside village.
Yes, that was just, that's just.
All property tax.
Oh, my goodness. No, no, so.
Education is the key.
It is. I have, I have a piece of legislation that I've introduced, I can't remember if it's dropped in or not, if it hasn't, it will soon. Education is a huge piece. First of all, people think that the state is the one giving the property tax. We don't get it. In fact, we paid two billion dollars in property tax for home set extension. If any of you have a home set extension, the state makes that up for you. So, the locals are making whole. There's also two and a half percent and ten percent rollback that the state makes up the difference for. So, education is huge. One of the first steps, my bill will require that the word percentage follow the word village. So, village just means a house. So, you pay property tax on thirty, thirty-five percent of your home's value, that's a long story, as to why it's thirty-five percent, it's thirty-five percent, and then ten mils is one percent. So, it's, but why can't we just say percentage? Nobody uses village in their language anywhere. I don't think even Latin people do. And it's a Latin phrase. So, that's one of the things. Another goal of this group, and Dave Thomas, which by the way, you got Jack Daniels and Dave Thomas, we're gonna, we're gonna propose the legislation, and then we start serving Jack Daniels and Wendy's. But Dave is really, really, he was county auditor and actually was kind of a very, very smart young man, very ambitious and, and very bold thinking. He's kind of leading up this charge, and our goal overall is to try to simplify property tax. For decades, property tax predates the state law. And if anybody wants a link to read a thirty-page report that Bill Romer did on the, from the bicameral property tax study commission, it will educate you a lot on the origin of tax, of property tax, how, how it got to be, how did we get these crazy rollbacks? How come we pay on thirty-five percent of our own value instead of a hundred percent? Why use village instead of percentage? All that stuff's plain. Our goal is to strip a lot of this stuff out and simplify. And one of our fears is that with another commission, they're gonna come up with some ideas, well, we'll modify this a little bit, we'll modify this a little bit, and we'll modify this a little bit. In my opinion, government has the right to take your taxes, but it should be clear and simple and easy to understand. But we do not have that system in law. Our property tax has grown at a higher rate than all of our other taxes, that's, that's out of balance. If you look at the resale, property income, property is out of whack, and it needs fixed, and it also needs to be lessened.
That's good stuff here, sorry. Good stuff.
Jack, I have two things, if you don't mind.
One of them is, as long as the president, I'll be taking up time, I enjoy this.
I see we're getting close on the, the emissions.
We are getting very close.
How are we, how are we progressing on that?
So, first of all, it's not our choice, the federal government put it on us. And then, we attained the goals set by the government, and then they changed the bar, and then we get to hitting the goals again, they change the bar, they just keep doing it over and over again. Bill Romer is the master of this subject. He has done more work on it than, and I don't know if you all know Bill, Bill used to be our ref. My goal was to replace Bill when he was done, and then when I got redistricted, that's when I ran for council, because I figured I had at least four more years. So, Bill's the master of this, and I think he's gotten us as close as possible, and there's hope that the new administration in White House is gonna have some compassion for us. The, the biggest change that he's trying to do is to allow you to self-certify. So, if you walk in at the license bureau and you just say, yep, my car doesn't have any check engine lights, it's good. If you, if you can self-certify for insurance and drive a four thousand pound vehicle up and down the highway, just with your signature saying, yeah, I'll buy insurance, my team should do a free check. I'd like to change that self-certification for insurance. I don't know if all of us can say that.
That's fantastic, I'd rather hear that. And another thing, just been popping up, I know, you know, the barbering, electric outages, and I know that affected some of ours, that obviously that's regulated at the state level, is there any chatter about any of that?
Yep, lots of it. So, because of HD six, which put Larry Househorn in prison and all that, one nice thing about the state of Ohio, I think we do a pretty good job of finding corruption, and they're in jail. That's how I feel about it being the state level. But because First Energy is based in Summit County, I've asked not to be on energy committees. However, I do know a lot about it. So, I used to hold storage at a twenty or fifty thousand dollar monthly electric bill, so I have been, I'm pretty invested in understanding the topic. In fact, today, I was at the Akron, the energy, I can't think of the.
The. The. The.
The. You, you used to be Recycle Energy, but now the Akron, the scheme, the scheme.
Right.
So, I toured that, and I had a lot of good conversations about, about energy. What's happening right now, from my limited expertise, has a lot more to do with distribution. So, you've got big high transmission, you have big generation, that's all at the high level, you've got the big, the big lines that go across and somewhere in the border and stuff like that, that's, that's transition and production. But then you have distribution. We had a couple storms that really racked havoc on local power lines, you know, the lines on the streets. And I think that's where the majority of what's happened in the last few months has come from. So, you have a storm, they go out, they fix it, everybody's in a scramble, but then, how many trees were weakened in that storm? You know, and they're just about ready to go, then you have another small storm and you get hit. I think that's what happened. On the bigger picture, we have a major problem in the state of Ohio. Another thing the governor vetoed is, we were trying to take the incentives away from building data centers, because data centers in the state of Ohio produce very little to no jobs, other than constructing, no ongoing jobs, and they eat a lot of power, a ton of power. So, we've got incentive system working, we keep, we keep bringing data centers in, and we don't have enough power. I learned something very interesting today at the, at the police energy plant. LED light bulbs had a pretty major impact, I just heard this today, to make perfect sense, on our competence in our grid, because over the last ten years, everybody's changed to high efficiency lighting, and our needs went down, and it gave a false impression that we were all in good shape as far as power goes. So, FERC and PJM, remember PJM, everybody's looking at everything and saying, oh, we're doing okay, you know, we're, we're meeting our needs. But the problem was, it was, it was a little bit of falsehood, because people were changing billions of light bulbs from a hundred and fifty watt, sixty watt, down to five watt. And that's a big, that's a big change. So, so we are going to be in trouble, and you are going to see pretty dramatic increases in energy, core energy production prices in the next five, ten years. I've actually had some conversations about trying to figure out a way that we could build a power plant somewhere locally, possibly even in Franklin. There's these a hundred and fifty megawatt plants that are small, don't take up a lot of footprint, they don't, they don't, they're not very disruptive, they're not very loud, they're scattered around the state. They also produce a lot of tax revenue, but well, so when we look at a community like New Franklin, where we're, we're in that balance between growth and everything, you know, if we could get a power plant here, we could possibly have a nice influx in, in tax money. This law of the state doesn't change the power tax, so.
Hey, Jack.
Right now, I'm down.
From the federal, PJMs, the FERCs, the HERS, stuff like that, they, they set the capacity charges, that's part of your legislative bill, and the transmission charges, which are part of the legislative bill. Didn't First Energy go to FERC and ask for a distribution increase, and didn't it get thrown down?
I believe. Again, I'm not on those committees, so I don't.
So, is there any, is there any thought from the legislative end, do they look at all these outages as, I wouldn't say it's coordinated, but is there a reason that they don't put all this money back into their system, so they can get all of us complaining about the outages, and then go back to FERC and say, look, our system is indeed, we need these increases? So, I'm just asking if you could look into that?
I would think First Energy is on their best behavior. Given, given what they've been through in the last five, eight years.
You and I only had six to seven outages in my house alone. Yeah, it's ridiculous.
I know there's a lot, but, and, and I don't, I don't, I don't know statistically for sure, but that's, we've trees, weakened by storms, and I, I don't.
So, here's another twist to it. So, like in California, they can roll in blackouts. The, the one CP and the five CP are coincidental peaks, those are what they base the capacity charges and transmission charges off of, and you're charged on those for the entire year based on those five or single incidents through the, typically the summer. Those, those peaks usually happen between four and six o'clock. A lot of our outages are four to six o'clock. I'm not saying they're shaving peak, or they're, you know, but if they could look into something like that, it's all gonna be appreciated.
I, I would, that's an interesting concept. Again, I've tried to stay out of that energy space as much as I can personally, just because I'm in Summit County. We're overweighted on Ways and Means, we have a lot of representation in the Ways and Means. A couple committees that were, that Summit County is, we're the fourth largest county in the state, so we deserve to be outweighed. I've just avoided the, the, the right to, the energy committees because of HD six, so. But that doesn't mean I can't ask some people to, to try to get into that. It does make sense.
And actually, a lot of Columbus are having issues with electricity.
Yeah, so you.
And they think some of it is transformers, that maybe they're not up to speed, that they can't afford to replace all the transformers and allow them to put them in. I know we had a problem with the salon.
We gave, the state has invested a significant amount of work before, allowed them to invest. I guess I don't know exactly how that goes, but if you go over in Springfield, you'll see some major work on transmission lines, major, major work. It's really upsetting residents over there, because there are people who guard and stuff, they'll use that in Fulton, but there has been, I know the state has facilitated, let me say that, because I don't know if we paid for it, if we just allowed them to charge rate.
Probably some point in point for the taxes.
Oh, I'm sure it's not free, but I know that we have supported a lot of expansion in infrastructure, to make the grid better. Where we're struggling, when we look at it on a long-term range, is, older basis, is generation. We don't have enough generation in PJM. Yeah, PJM.
PJM is Pennsylvania, Jersey, Maryland. But then ASI is the, the subzone within PJM that we're in, that's the First Energy owned area.
So, he knows a lot, because he runs, he runs that for us.
And all the, all the infrastructure, that they, they actually are building, that gets spread out over the Arizona, the ASI zone.
Right.
And the, the co-ops and investor homes, they get like a fifty percent return on investment during.
So, the, the generation problem, our generation problem, seems to be a lot to do with New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Maryland, eliminating non-green power production, where we're willing and able to produce more power with natural gas, we have a lot of natural gas in the state, we're a little short on pipelines, but we do have a lot of natural gas. So, there, that's, that's one of the political arguments, is that we're in, we're involved in this with a whole bunch of states that only have green thumbs, and we need to, we need power before we need a green thumb, if there's more, that's the, that's the balance. However, I've heard that the one that they're talking about us joining, which is Indiana, Kentucky, Southern Illinois, I've heard it's got a lot of problems of its own. So, whether Ohio's gonna leave PJM and then go to that one, I don't really know.
And talk to ISO?
Yes, that's it, that's it. Yes, that's it, that's it. So I don't know if that's true or not, so I'm not sure. It's a good thought, but I can do this all, I can say it for hours.
Major comments there is, isn't there?
There is a lot to this, I will say. I don't know crap about many cases, so. There you go. I'll try to come back, like I said, what is it, because of, for appreciating people.
Anybody else have any public comment?
Sharon Bigel, six seventy-nine, Central. Actually, a couple of things, I'll try to go quickly. The first is a question. It was mentioned that finance director position was going to take on more responsibilities, more duties from some other position, I'm assuming. So who used to do the other duties that is going to the finance director?
Well, previously it was administrative and the administration department was directed by the mayor. So that's really where the buck stopped. The, there was some delegation of that, but there was nothing to, to authenticate that in terms of passing out job assignments, et cetera. So it's not taken from an individual and given to the finance director, basically is, sort of confirming, well, it is, it's taking someone off the mayor and making that responsibility to finance director for, not just the finance department, for the administration department as well.
It's also giving some redundancy as far as cross-training, stuff like that. And wasn't there some TIF reporting that comes into that as well?
Oh, yeah.
So there's stuff that's recently been acquired, cross-training for redundancy and taking some stuff off of mayor's board.
Is there somewhere to be able to see the job descriptions of?
It's attached to the legislation.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I spoke to you soon. The job, which job descriptions?
Any of the job descriptions.
Sure, they're all public record and the, the amended one is attached to the legislation.
I can see that. But the other ones are?
Sure, yeah.
Um, sorry. With, with regards to ordinance twenty-five dash, dash three, how our council decides to handle that, I would just like to suggest that all applicants, whether they're going for council or they're going for the mayor, whoever's making the decision, all applicants are forwarded to all people. Whether council would get to choose out of those two applicants, whatever, I still think that the all applicants deserve the opportunity to have their information put before everyone so that everyone knows who's interested. Maybe not this particular time, but in the future.
Do you mean everyone here or, or posted on the website for all the citizens?
No. I guess, I guess that's another thought in there. I'm just saying if, if John Brown applies and it happens to be a position that would go before the mayor and that particular timeframe, correct?
I believe our current practice is we do circulate all those. All, all the applications that come in for the position, we've provided to not just the mayor, but also to council. And maybe not.
I think there's an instance where Sharon's talking about that she may have applied to something, you didn't get an application.
The DCA or the planning and zoning?
No, not, not, not anything that qualifies at parks.
Okay.
And again, whether, whether the person is, is going seriously to be considered at that particular time or not, I think that their application should be able to be due so that.
I'll make sure, well, somebody here forever, but I'll make sure that, we'll try to pass that on, that when we open the applications, that everybody, that we circulate the applications to, to all the councils as well. Regardless of who's charged with making the appointment.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else, public comments? Seeing done, move on to our first resolution, resolution twenty-five R thirty-seven.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for Federal Surface Transportation Program STP funds programmed by the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study, AMAS, to improve paving on state road and declaring an emergency.
This resolution was signed with the Streets and Journeys Committee. I motion to adjourn with me reading.
Second.
We have a first and a second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
I motion to adopt resolution number twenty-five R thirty-seven.
We have a first and a second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
I motion to adopt resolution number twenty-five R thirty-eight.
Second.
We have a first and a second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five R thirty-eight?
Second.
Motion, you ask for a motion.
All right.
So move.
We have a first and a second.
Who was the first?
You ask, he asks for a motion.
Correct. And then Judy, who was second?
So move. That's a motion.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
No.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Motion passes, six to one.
Resolution twenty-five R thirty-eight. Resolution twenty-five R thirty-eight.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with OHM advisors on the design of the Sisler Park Trail project and declaring an emergency.
This was brought forth in front of the community development committee and like to ask for time.
Time requested, time granted. Resolution twenty-five R forty.
A resolution amending resolution twenty-five dash R dash thirty-four to proceed with an additional levy of a tax in excess of the ten mil limitation to replace an expiring five point seven five mil fire slash EMS levy to enable the city of New Franklin to provide fire protection services and ambulance and emergency medical services and to submit the question of the tax to the electors at the November fourth, two thousand twenty-five election and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three-year rule for resolution twenty-five R forty.
Second.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
I can, motion passed, resolution twenty-five R forty.
Second. We have a first and a second.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
I can, motion passed, resolution twenty-five R forty.
Second. We have a first and a second.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt twenty-five R forty-one.
Second.
We have a first and a second.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Finally, I'd like to make a motion to adopt twenty-five R forty-one.
Second. We have a first and a second.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt twenty-five R forty-one.
Second.
We have a first and a second.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Resolution passes, seven zero. Resolution twenty-five R forty-two.
A resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the police
district fund and declaring an emergency.
Uh, resolution twenty-five R forty-two is before the finance committee. I'd like to make a motion to waive the three.
Second.
We have a first and a second.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt twenty-five R forty-two.
Second.
We have a first and a second.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
Resolution passes, seven zero. Resolution twenty-five R forty-three.
A resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the Parks and Recreation Fund to the Parks and Recreation Capital Projects Fund and declaring an emergency.
And last but not least, I'd like to make a motion to waive the three on twenty-five R forty-three.
Second.
We have a first and a second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Finally, I'd like to make a motion to adopt twenty-five R forty-three.
Second. We have a first and a second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stiles?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Aman?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Shaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Resolution passes, seven zero. Next is our favorite part of the week, the mayor's agenda.
If I can just make it to the end of the session. First of all, uh, Dr. Daisy, just assumed you're sitting back up here. How many pages was that budget?
Uh, I don't know. Like, we read this, we, we do it all electronically and.
It'd be a thousand.
And it's, oh yeah, it was thousands, I thought it was five thousand, but I, you hear about the federal one and I get confused on it. We have a summary that we can search, keyword search and stuff, so it's, it's, you get a topic, you can drill down on it. They, they provide us with some pretty good, pretty good tools to digest large amounts of data.
But we appreciate you being there. It's, it's obviously no small thing having a New Franklin resident sit down there and serve us, so we appreciate your, your work and your willingness to serve. All right, first I want to mention, um, the, the TIF legislation, there was the resolution to create the Economic Development District, and then there were the, the two TIF districts that were approved by ordinance, uh, and the vote on those, it was, uh, three yes, two no, and, and two abstain. Uh, and with that, it was deemed that the legislation passed. Uh, the, it was brought to the attention, we had some questions about whether or not you needed four, uh, votes to pass a, a resolution or an ordinance. So I referred that to our law director, and I did that because this is a procedural question. It doesn't matter what the nature of the resolution or the ordinance was. It could have been any one of these tonight. All right, so the, the decision is that you have to have four votes. You have to have four yes votes to pass an ordinance. That's really the question for a resolution. And because it was procedural and not substantive, I asked our law director to give us an initial The substance of those has to do with the water nine development. Uh, and we intentionally, because of, uh, the fact that the water nine, uh, the advocate for that is represented by Russell and Andres, and our attorney is with Russell and Andres, uh, to avoid any appearance of impropriety, uh, we have not had him involved, well, we had an agreement going in that if there's ever any litigation, that neither would represent, uh, that Russell would represent either one of them. And then we brought in Jason Butterworth from Brennan, Mann and Diamond, because he's a specialist in TIF legislation, so we had him representing us in that regard. So, and I'll try to make this quick. It's a wonderful legal question, uh, that, uh, I spent a lot of time in the courtroom, but it was really a lot more fun when I was up in the law library, uh, digging this stuff up, uh, because I didn't know, we didn't know the answer to it. And, and it looks at first, our, our charter says that none shall be passed without a concurrence of a majority of the members of council. So that's why I guess you gotta have four. Emergency ordinances shall require the affirmative vote of at least two-thirds. And so when they, when they dove into it, the research standpoint, words have a meaning, uh, and, and the requirement for a majority was a concurrence of a majority to pass. If it's an emergency, you have to have an affirmative vote of two-thirds. And there's a difference, it turns out, between a concurrence and affirmative votes. Uh, and, uh, the case of the law goes, well, first of all, I look to Robert's rules, and surprisingly to me, Robert's rules says that a, an abstention is counted with the majority. That when you abstain, you basically are deferring to the rest of council, whatever you guys decide to do. And, uh, so we saw, I saw that in Roberts, I said, well, I wonder if that's the law? Well, I didn't know. Well, I didn't have to do the research, but, uh, but, uh, Earth and his firm did. Uh, and it turns out that that, what they refer to as a common law rule, uh, has been adopted by the courts. And I won't go deep into this, uh, we have an opinion, we can share this initially. There's a case that, um, uh, good for us, comes out of the Ninth District. And that's a district that, if there was ever litigation on this, that would be... It would go to the Ninth District Court of Appeals first. Uh, and then a very, very similar situation up in the village of Ablon. Uh, they had a three-to-two vote, uh, and somebody was staying, and the question is the four. Uh, and the court came back and said that they adopted what they call the, uh, the common law rule. One who is present at a council meeting but who does not register a negative vote shall be held to acquiesce in the action taken by the majority. The legal effect of refusing to vote is an acquiescence in the action taken by the majority of those who do vote, and therefore, uh, it gets counted when you... When we're talking about the, uh, concurrence of a majority. Those who abstain are deemed to have concurred with the majority. And therefore, we had five people who concurred with the majority. The three who voted yes and the two that abstained. Um, the basis of the authority for that decision, which came out in nineteen fifty-eight, and the penalty's been good law for quite a long time, uh, is a Ohio Supreme Court case that's been good law for even longer than that, it was decided in eighteen eighty-one. Uh, and that's where the... You know, they talked about that common rule. So that's what they cited. So, uh, Mr. Sugarman's opinion was that, um, that there was a concurrence of a majority for that legislation, and all of it was rightfully passed. It did not pass as an emergency because while there were five concurring votes, there were not five affirmative votes. Um, so I guess what I would say, in abundance of caution, I have now referred it back over to Jason Butterworth, just to avoid any suggestion that perhaps, you know, because, uh, Mr. Sugarman is with Russell. Um, and I will pause and say, and I think it's a good idea. So I've asked Mr. Butter... Attorney Butterworth to take a look, uh, and he's going to issue an opinion as well. Uh, and whether or not he feels that, uh... If it turns out he disagrees and there's some... Then we'll have to come back to council with that. And there's a variety of measures the council can take, but I don't think we're going to have to get there, quite frankly. I think this is good law. Um, and finally, I'll say on behalf of... Well, and Mr. Daniels, you put your hand up to take a note. Uh, there is, um, really, uh, a strong ethical foundation in, I think, the people who practice law, especially those who practice for a long time. And I'm not talking about me, I'm talking about Earth and those attorneys. You know, they don't just get out an opinion to... Let me find a way to make it favor your side. Not to say it's a balanced issue, you can have it pro and a con, but I got a lot of respect for him as an attorney, and, uh, quite frankly, uh, he started this. I would say we, from a standpoint of like, I don't think we've got it. You know, it says we gotta have... We didn't have four votes. So it really started from there, and then low and behold, the research took us somewhere else. So I just wanted to update council on that as soon as I get, uh, something back from... Attorney Butterworth, I'd like to have something by the next meeting. Um, because he has to do is they have to do their own research. But they got a head start because somebody's helping with cases. He's going to be operative cases, no matter who does the research. Uh, there's several, you know. Uh, all right, so that's that. Uh, all right. Um, the, uh... While we're talking about things over at Sisler, uh, and the, uh, and what we do, you know, with the trail, in that regard, uh, separate parts of that, we want to get restrooms over there. And, uh, the flow from those restrooms has to go through the package plant that is the Manchester Schools Package Plant. Uh, and they have agreed that, uh... Well, we... Again, talking to them about, would they agree to accept the flow from our restrooms? Um, and I can't remember if I told you guys about this, if any folks about this. All right. But we found out there's problems with the package plant, so it needs some foundational work. The tune of about sixty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, and so our preliminary discussions with them were, "We'll split that sixty-eight thousand, and in return, you let us... You accept the flow, uh, from our restrooms." Uh, and our share of the thirty-four thousand would be, um, eighteen thousand cash and sixteen thousand in labor. Uh, and those funds would come out of the Parks Commission, and the Parks Commission has recommended that expenditure. Uh, so, and, uh, Mr. Schaefer, you really asked a good question there on that, uh, on that trail, because, um, we need to button that up, and I'm glad you mentioned that. Uh, because we are... It was obvious we needed to button this one up, and so we're in the process of putting the MOU together, memorandum of understanding together to be approved by council and also to be approved by school board, to approve that, that entire agreement or arrangement. Um, I will note, not everybody in the world uses Russell, but it turns out that the Manchester Schools do. So we had to... Both had to waive any conflict. There's no apparent conflict of interest, but both sides had to waive conflict for the two to agree on that. We already have a draft of that MOU, uh, and, uh, so once we have that in place, I'll bring that to council, uh, and the superintendent will bring that to the schools. And there's yet a final piece, and that's the Ohio EPA. We have to make sure that they don't have a problem with that. At one point, it looked like that wasn't going to be a problem, but then we were advised that since it's a new entity going to send flow to that, that they're probably going to want to at least be aware and perhaps have to permit that. Uh, and, uh, so we're reaching out to them as well. Once we have the MOU, we're going to put it in front of the EPA directly and say, "This is what we want to do, is there a problem here?" Uh, we don't expect there to be, uh, but we gotta clear that hurdle as well. So as soon as all of those ducks are in a row, I'll have legislation for you on that one. While I'm talking about the EPA, uh, the, uh... There's been discussion, and the projects we have are moving along just fine. The water project's moving along just fine, and it's just about done. Uh, the paving over at the Tudor House is fabulous, uh, and that was part of that project. Uh, and, uh, and the sewer is just about... We're just about ready to button that one down, and it looks like we should be going out for bid here in a couple of weeks, and, uh, construction should start even before the end of the year, so that's moving at a good pace. It looks like we're going to have some funds left over from that grant, uh, from the initial three million dollar federal grant for the sewer project, uh, that, uh, that we're going to be able to slide over to the Phase Two where we try to convert... Where we have to convert that, uh, the package plant, the Zeller Package Plant to a pump station.
How much?
Uh, that project is in the nine million dollar range.
How much left over?
About a million. Yeah. And we've got the, uh, the three point eight still sitting in the bank, um, from the operating budget, uh, and the, uh, the county has committed to three point five. So with that, our funding gap shrinks a little bit. Um, we're probably going to be... I don't even know if I can go back and ask for more money from the operating budget. Uh, we have a request in, uh... I don't know, I have no idea, and I'm even afraid to look in Washington, because Senator Houston did, uh, at least he accepted our, uh, our application for three million for that project. I have no idea if those... If there's... If that's included in that budget or not. Um, so, anyway. So that's all that's going on there, and, uh... But I want to let you know that meanwhile, the schools are interested in getting water. And so I don't have a lot to tell you about this and such, serious. That there's been some preliminary... The water right now stops at, um, Grace Church, right, the same place as Sewer Desk. So they're doing some, uh, some design work and some estimates to run that water line to Minnesota and then from Minnesota down to the schools. Uh, and they're looking for funding for that, okay? That would get, you know, might... We certainly want to get water to that section. We have some businesses, we'd be able to eliminate a few public water systems, so there may be some funding available for that. So we just entered the discussion, uh... Uh, I said, "If you guys want to do that, why don't we loop it?" Because a loop is better for the water, right? And so why don't we... If we get that far, why don't we go north on Renner to Center Road, and then up... Back up Center Road to ninety-three, and then maybe we also go a little bit east on Center Road and try to hit Cayman and all those houses? And, uh, wouldn't it be wonderful if VP agreed to be a partner with us in that? Uh, yeah. So, uh, so far, they have not... You might remember, a year ago, we sent out something to everybody in affected areas, and EPA did a report, and there were different options that they had. And one option was to put water in all those houses, and VP suggested there was a softer way for that to be done. I'm surprised. And, uh, it looks like, uh, that... Their recommendation was going to be adopted, but we got in, I think, right before the bell rang on that one, and we're going to have a meeting, I think, Friday. Um, maybe to set that up, to talk to EPA, and then see if the EPA can suggest to, uh, to VP to contribute to this, so that we could run that and get the water, uh, really available for those neighborhoods. You know, that VP remediation area came all the way up to Bolander from Main Street, and from center, uh, almost to Minnesota, not quite. All right? So there were homes in those areas as well that initially were in that area, and there's always been, because of the way the water flows, a concern of, you know, when's it going to get to Brian's house? Not to talk people either. Sorry. Uh, so we're working on that today, uh, and we'll see if we can't come up with a form then maybe to get some water to that section as well. So, all right. Uh, let's see. Um, easy stuff. Saturday, Dragon Boat, uh, eight-thirty it all starts, and the guy comes with his headdress and all, and he blesses the boats, and it's really a neat thing. Uh, and then we are defending our title, uh, in the, uh, community section, so if you... It's a wonderful spectacle, I tell anybody who's listening. It's just a great fun event down there. A thousand people, food trucks, uh, and, uh, um, and, of course, you know, all the breast cancer survivors. Uh, so if you can be there for that, great. We had a great music night last night. We had a seventeen-piece jazz orchestra. Uh, and, uh, we had over a hundred people, and it was a nice evening, and, uh, I think if we bring them back, we'll have three times that, because the people that are there really enjoyed it. Uh, and let's see. Uh, and then movie night is Tuesday, and that's Toy Story. Uh, as soon as it gets dark, I think we're going to do that on the Upper Paddyville. Uh, all right? The Tudor House Barbecue fundraiser is August the seventh. Uh, I believe there's people in room that already have tables, or at least... Yeah. So, uh, yeah, plenty of good support for that, so please come out for that. That's our big fundraiser. It's going to be Thursday, August seventh. Um, uh, let me see. Oh, next Thursday, the twenty-fourth, at six-thirty, Planning and zoning has a workshop, uh, on Article Three, and if possible, you can attend. And part of what was in Article Three was this thing about storage containers and pods, and there were some suggested revisions to those sections, among those some others. So it's really a matter of looking at where the revisions were on that. So if you can be there for that, it would be helpful, as Planning and zoning considers that, and you'll be able to hear the presentation on it and providing the play, et cetera. And they're also going to preview that Article Five as well. So, uh, that's next Thursday, this public meeting, the public hearing, come on out. Oh, it's a public... It's a workshop, so there's no action intent expected with that one, but trying to keep moving that train down the tracks. So those who are really getting into the meat of it, especially when we get to Article Five. And lastly, uh, and I don't know if the showman, if, uh, the new Mr. Stiles wanted to talk about the short-term rentals, or... I would just say, I think you've circulated that with everybody.
Yeah, we're also looking to look at business. I can see that now.
Okay, all right. Yeah.
Yeah, so Phil Constable, Mr. Wolf, and Mr. Stiles and I have been working closely with your rental regulations. There are renews.
Sorry, leave you on that.
And, um, we had been able to meet with the zoning department and the police department to see how best to tackle this issue, especially people on the front lines of it, not just people who sit up here and talk about it. And, um, you know, thankfully, we were able to propose, we were speaking with them, and got some really receptive feedback, and able to work with what they see and what works best with how they run the departments. And then we culminated all that information and did a really good draft, and we sent it off to our law director, Sugarman, who's taken a really good look at it because of just the legal nuances and regulating anything anymore. And thankfully for us is that he has experience with this in the past. At least, to my knowledge, only with Coventry, but I believe he's probably done multiple things with Coventry and maybe at other municipalities. So it's good to have an eye, it's well-trained on the topic alone. So we have a look at that. The front end was to have it at this council meeting. You know, we took a while to meet with the zoning and the police department, took a really good look at it. So we're taking our time on it, and hopefully by August, we'll have a proposal of the reg... The regulations, so the rest of council can see what we've been working on. And I'm excited, we've put a lot of work into this.
Mr. Daniels, I know that there's a bill pending, uh, but, uh, we're looking for the window to pass this legislation before that legislation might get passed. What's your best guess?
I have to two, three. All I could say is pass, anything you want to pass as soon as you can.
Okay.
Um, I think...
Are you guys on recess for a while, other than the override?
Say again?
Are you on recess for a while?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, yeah, we're on recess still. It'll be... There's some, uh, possible sessions in September, but for the most part, it's a third block.
That's where I'm sitting, so we...
So we have to...
I told you to get in under the wire.
Yeah, well done. Um, my feeling on this topic from a state level is that we should not ban registration. And I think that's pretty safe. I think having a registration process and some basic rules that are around the registration of the property, um, is okay. Um, I don't... You know, I looked at this when I started on council, but I got about this deep into it and didn't get done with it. So I would love to see what you're working on, if you wouldn't mind sharing it with me more. And I may be able to kind of ask around as to who... I don't know who the base players are that are pushing... Every piece of legislation has got something. Like I mentioned, Dave Thomas is the property tax guy. Um, you know, somebody in the House is pushing this, and if I can figure out who that is and get their ear, I might be able to give you some advice.
All right. Welcome.
Smart. Thank you.
That's all I got.
Uh, do we have a financial report tonight?
Uh, no.
Okay. Uh, next up is old business.
Um, real quick, um, we've had a lot of discussions tonight about the, uh, about the boards, um, and, uh, and I... I believe I speak for Mr. Powell, and if I don't, you're welcome to correct me. Uh, the idea that was presented is not an indictment against current members on the board. Uh, we have some really good people that are on our boards and work really hard, and I think the Planning and Zoning Commission is a fine example of that. They've been working their butts off this last year and a half or whatever on these things, and where other boards might meet four or five times a year, you know, this seems like they're meeting every month and, you know, going through a lot of work and going a lot of work outside of the meetings. So I don't want there to be any, uh, at least I believe with your ordinance suggestion, that it wasn't about who's currently on the boards, and we have, uh... I believe we have complete faith in the members of the boards, and, uh, they've just been doing a great job for us, and we appreciate what they're doing. So I just wanted to share that.
I'm sorry. I have time to listen to the farmer's market. There's dates from three until seven. We've had so many churnouts, and I kind of say we've had lots of them. We've had rain probably the last four out of five times, and so we've either had to leave early or canceled totally, but please come out, because you'll see such good food. And we have several people that have baked goods that are delicious. Rob, and this wife came up, I think, when you were three, Robert?
It was great.
I got such a... So we'll afford to see you Thursdays, three until seven.
I wrote about that today, I think.
Did you hear about it?
No, I wrote about it.
Oh, you wrote about it?
I'm sure everybody reads what I write.
What did you write? I listened, that's why I'm sorry. What did you write?
Yeah. You asked for it, yeah. Yeah, I wrote, you asked for it. You got it, now support it.
Now support it, you are right.
Yeah, gently, I tried it.
Yep, that was nice. That's what I find doing gently.
Yeah.
Nothing to fear from work that don't fall.
One thing I like to bring up on the old business is, a while back, we talked about the rural park pavilion and dedicating that. And I forgot about it, I want to bring that back up.
Yeah. Well, we are running the electric, and we'll have a couple lights up there. Um, so, um... Yes, well, you know what? I know I had discussion, I don't know that we affirmably made any decision. Did we make a decision?
We talked about...
We talked about it. Medicating it, but we haven't made it.
But that kind of just... The radar says one of them...
Yeah, no, that's a good... That's a good thought.
We talked about those...
We talked about the globuses.
We did, both of them.
That wasn't a book, oh, no.
They are from...
But you're... But who's family?
And they would have loved it.
All right, let me follow up on that.
And then old business?
I'll talk about the Dragon Boat team for just a second. You guys are going to have some stiff competition this year. They recently came back from Pennsylvania with a silver and bronze medal.
Oh, my gosh.
And I also understand there's going to be at least ten boats out there of cancer survivors in there this Saturday, so you better bring your A game.
Sorry, I already go quick and we're way down with all that gold in it, so...
Anybody else? See if I'm in your business?
I do want to mention something. This really probably should have gone on the whole business, but it's something... I think... There's something else I want to say. Remember, that a lot of people really are in need of food supplies, and if you donate to some of the organizations, and I really like the Portland community, they actually can buy so much more with if we do our donations to them, and if we buy the food, and there's apple and fruit, and... I mean, there's so many different ways to harvest. They're all good, but if we donate, people get so much more than if we do it, try to give just a little bit of money to the community. So please, you'll remember that.
One thing I want to bring up is, we talked briefly about percentage in the outages and stuff, and I know a neighbor community has reached out to them, had... I'm not sure if it's Annie Hopkins or somebody from her group coming to call out the council. I'd like to recommend that maybe we do something like that as well, and... Being in the industry, I don't buy the reason for all these outages. I'm skeptical.
Yeah, that's what I was...
Good luck getting a reply back to them, you know, as well. I had zero luck getting replied back.
All right, I'll reach out.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to that. So where I live and where I work, about a mile apart from each other, Boca and Ward Four, in the northeast section of Ward Four, um, we've had twelve outages. Um, one, for mine, where I live, probably about thirteen hours, which is like borderline throwing out food, et cetera. Um, and then at our office in the middle of the day, it was three o'clock, so it was four o'clock, it's three PM, right in the middle of the day, and it's not like I can go home and work at my home office because it's the same time. But twelve times this year, I've lived there seventeen years, I've not had twelve outages in seventeen years. I hear all these excuses that birds and trees and bad weather. I mean, we've had birds and trees and bad weather before. This is just an inordinate mildness of... And I don't think it's affecting our whole city, but at least the portion in my neighborhood...
What time frame did that date, those 12?
Uh, this year, but mostly from the spring.
Last two months.
Yeah, I would, I would look at, yeah, May through July. Yeah, May, June, July, it's been pretty, pretty rough on us. I know that where our office is, they obviously throw out a little, because they didn't come online for, they're about 48 hours, and that's on the downstream road. So, I, and I saw what our neighboring cities done, the mayor's done this, they drug people in there, you know, I don't, I don't know if it's a primer, yeah, no, it's, it's pretty serious. I mean, it's something that we take for granted, I mean, I did, I just kind of want to put a lot of light, and it works. It's not so, it's not like that.
Well, you guys have been extremely patient, because I, I was aware that it, that it was barbering and some, but I didn't realize the extent, or the number of outages.
Two other businesses you're telling me right now.
Call me.
It's just been bad.
I'll reach out.
And we have a publicity suggestion, various regulations and guidelines, like the wide road and stuff, and we're not eating those, it's pretty bad.
I see, but if it's trees, and I understand, like, there's a right way we can do, you know, where they can go, but they can't go on someone's property and tear down a tree that...
What do you mean? So, they, they want to, they trim within, within 25 feet of the wide road, they, they got programs doing it, I think Nelson might be there.
Yeah, UC.
So, anyways, they've got programs doing it.
Right.
Well, even more so when they do come and cut those trees, and they're not coordinating with the city at all, so residents are calling the city saying, who cut down these trees? And we didn't cut them. So, it's a power puppy, it's like coordinating with the city and stuff like that.
A lot of times, they'll be door hangers, they'll, they'll put a door hanger on stuff, but the other thing is, you know, it's the birds. These, these systems are set up with huge coordination, where if you get a contact online that causes the trip, downstream will, will go dark, but you've got fuses, sequence along the way where it'll, it'll blow and keep suppressing system up, same with the repo, where they go through a sequence where, where you'll see your lights blank, and then they might go off like 30 seconds and it's up, right? That's a whole sequence back at the subsection, and it's designed to either clear the hazard or blow the fuses, so then everything else comes back up. Then there's something, it's either...
I mean, it's a significant third world venture.
And that's what I'm getting, Kevin, I'm getting the blue thing, just enough to shore your, your Tudor off. So, it shuts everything down, it's not, it's, it's flashing every so often.
So, it'd be great to have, and I think we're going to...
And if there was some sort of report that you could ask, is it like, you provide my address, can they go back and see how many times?
So, that would be, yeah, so, any to get that, I said, was it the government affairs relation person?
You can use my...
I'll reach out.
Use my office address, it's been pretty bad.
That is, that's, it really interrupts you there.
So, thank you.
Here's a depressing note, but it will cheer us all up, like how lucky we are, when you talk about the outages, and I, I look this up for a different reason. 600, I know, what are you going to do? 600 million people in this world have no electricity. Wow, that is, that's twice the population of the United States. Every day, we're not moving, just 60.
There's a huge effort out west, out in New Mexico, that it's Napa Nation, it's called Life in Napa Nation, where all these public power communities and stuff send people out there to volunteer their time to run power to these people, that generations, hundreds of years of people who never get out, don't get in power. These people, it's just, that's just there, so, yeah, I mean, if you sort of want to live in the world, it's incredible.
Every morning, take a hot shower, reach in the fridge, it's so easy to take that stuff for granted.
Different things, guys, guys, give them, give them, give them.
Any other new business?
I don't want to take it for granted, I want it.
So, new business, so we're back to the public questions and answers, raise a debate?
All right. I didn't mean to come here to talk about, but I got off track and forgot a very important thing that I wanted to talk about, and is one of the reasons I'm here, and that is that now that we've passed the operating budget, it's time to start working on the capital budget. So, you know, the mayor is familiar with how this process works. Think about projects, it's not going to be as robust as it was last year, so, or two years ago. Two years ago, we had a bunch of COVID money and everything, so money was just spewing out everybody. We're not going to have that, but that doesn't mean you shouldn't think about projects, think about parks, think some, think about capital intense things. A typical window of dollar that's, that seems to be preferred is somewhere between 300,000 and 750,000. That doesn't mean you can't have a million-dollar project, doesn't mean you couldn't have a $50,000 project, but it's, it's really good to have a project that you're thinking of organized and documented, some quotes, before November, or mid-November, or something like that, will really kick it off strong. January is when we'll start working on, on capital, but in reality, we're, we're already thinking about it. So, I want to make sure that got communicated. The water project, I wanted to, I wanted to throw something out to you.
Oh, that would be great.
That, that, that corner Manchester in Minnesota, so I don't know if you know the Tavern has had all kinds of well problems, works or stuff, it's very complicated, well, but, you know, I, I've tried to talk to him about, hey, go advocate, you know, if we can get Brian Benton, the folks, Manchester, Tavern, you know, get these people advocating individually. You know, government does not shove money down your throat. Government just is looking for people who are advocating for themselves. So, if you know anybody at that intersection, you know, ask them to write letters, ask them to, to call my office, you know, Casey Weinstein is our senator now, you know, call those offices and advocate, because, and then if you come up with a program or a project, you know, I, I, my job is to advocate for this district.
That's a big deal.
If we email you, Jack, you can give us form letters or give us ideas?
The best thing to do is just to type a regular email. The form letters, we get so many, so, for libraries, I don't know if you heard about the library drama, the government proposed a 10% increase, we cut it to like a 2% increase, and I got 5,000 emails. I found out how, I have emailing at the library, when you open your computer and you try to log on to the wifi, the first option was, send the letter to your, take representative Jack in, so I sent it to him. So, the form letters are not good, send, just send in a specific letter, rep32@ohiohouse.gov is my, is my official office email, rep32, we're all rep, rep whatever number it is, I'm 32, rep32@ohiohouse.gov. And, and get the people in that, in that neighborhood riled up. When you have an area that wants something, get the team together.
I think we should be able to.
Oh, no question. And I appreciate the reminder, and especially the time, because it really kind of dovetails with what we've done. And in terms of what we've, what we've done and have success with, was to put actually a whole package together, you know, explaining exactly, but that's what we did for the, for the people.
That would be great, Paul, and I think, didn't that...
I'm sorry? Yeah.
How about the gentleman there on the corner with the gas station? I'm sure he would be interested.
So, what, what I would do is, and certainly brainstorm on yourselves, but I'll bring to council an idea that, you know, for a project that we chase. As I sit here right now, and I'm thinking 300,000, 700,000, there's, there's that, you know, but when you talk about water projects, that's attractive, and maybe the more, what I just talked about in terms of trying to loop this water, and the conversation we'll have on Friday, it's many players that we can get in that. So, if we can show a commitment from Aqua, and if we can show, you know, some commitment from the schools, if we can show that we're eliminating some public water systems, there's at least a half a dozen in that section.
BP, BP is...
Right, and if we get BP at the table, and then we can come with it to the capital budget, here's our funding gap, and that's, and we show that, and a million's a nice round number, you don't hurt to ask for it, you know? And that million might be the million that would make this thing happen.
I agree.
And so, fortunately, it's really sort of divine, that we're already in those very, very discussions, exactly that, and that's, and that's what we're, it's already something that, you know, you didn't create the idea just because the state might have one.
Right.
It's something you've been working on, you understand the greater good, the community understands the greater good, we're not advocating for a bridge to nowhere, this is something that's really wanted. But I think one big key to that is those residents advocating for themselves. When they're silent, it's hard to say, oh, I'll go fight for you, because I think you need it, that's...
We maybe need to do some door-to-door.
Well, or at least the businesses, so that we got, and we'll do that, and that's part of what we, that's what we did for the water project up here, we went to each one of those businesses, and they all agreed they'd take the water.
And I think it would.
And so, if we can get these folks to do that same thing, then we've got a nice piece to take to the EPA, to try to plug into some of that worst of the money. And so, all right, those, those will determine, but we'll make sure we accelerate that a little bit.
In my office, you know, Patrick is my legislative aide, I have the most brilliant legislative aide in all of these, screw up my schedule that day.
That's no question.
He's really good, he's a good, he's a very...
You've heard him paid for money enough times, you didn't need to be there for that.
I, I say I have such a good legislative aide that somebody will probably work for him, so, he's a good guy, so, yeah.
All right, thanks, what do you say?
Any other public comments, questions, wants, if you could go through? See, none? You all have a lead for the exact discussion, do you? Do I have a motion for Joe?
Any motion?
Set it, the first and the second, Joe?
Mr. Goss?
Sure.
Mr. Shaffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
The best thing is going to be August 6, at 6:00 PM.
What, what's the thing?